Begin by calling this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. And can I have a motion to go into the primary committee? Commissioner Smith, Councilor Doherty. All those in favor? Okay, we are in the primary committee meeting and first item of business is the agenda for this evening. Motion to adopt the agenda. Commissioner Doherty, Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? And our first presentation this evening is Barb Stewart from the Boundary Invasive Species Society and proposing that the city implement a management program for invasive plants and further that we provide financial support to the program, a region-wide education program. Barb, welcome.
Thank you. So I'm also Irene Perropolkins, also here on behalf of the Boundary Invasive Species Society. You guys may have heard us before as the Boundary Weed Management Committee. So anyway, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present here this evening. I'm going to talk a bit about our society, what our program. One of the main functions of the society itself is to do strategic planning. So we do planning for region-wide, for the entire boundary. Our society also delivers education program and a coordination management program, and I'll talk a bit about those. We are actually a registered charity, which very few people actually know. So I want to talk a bit about membership and partnerships. I'm trying to put our program into three minutes or less, so it's gonna be a challenge. The Boundary Invasive Species Society has membership from government agencies, local government, industry utilities, community groups, both agricultural and environmental, and individuals. We also have some partnerships outside the region. We're working with several other groups in the Cootneys on an aquatic invasive species working group. And we also partner on the Weeds Cross Borders Project, which is something that's been going on for, oh, about eight years now. And we had the opportunity to have Mayor Taylor there during part of the tour this summer, which was really great to have him out there, and also Counselor Smith as well. So that's a project where we actually work with Okanagan County, Ferry County, and the South Okanagan programs, because there's different rules either side of the border. So trying to make our programs work together and in return for doing some management on our side, we actually get assurances that certain species won't come up our way, which is really a good benefit for our program. Just invasive plants in general. As I mentioned, we've become a species society. Our main focus remains on plants, but we are starting to branch into species and into aquatics. I can imagine, all of you here recognize that picture, lovely horellism. There's definitely been some agricultural impacts. It can reduce the farm income, crop quality, and they estimate 50 million annually lost in B.C., but that's a really old estimate, it's about 25 years old. So horellism's certainly a problem. There's a lot of impacts to our community from invasive plants. This is actually an infestation of knotweed. Is there? There is. Oh, knotweed, and it's on a river system. Fortunately, it's not here. We don't have that in our river yet, which is really good. But it can create a barrier to wildlife and recreation. You can't physically even get through that lovely barrier there. And it actually does increase risk of erosion, surprisingly. You'd think that would be nice to staple on a riverbank, but it's actually making problems with, it's actually washing away banks. You can get increased erosion and sedimentation from invasive plants, reduce property values, and damage to private property. This is actually a lovely picture from the Regional District of Cootney Boundary Office in Trail, with knotweed growing up through the foundation pavement and right near all the gas going into the building. Knotweed actually in the U.K. has made it difficult for people to get mortgages for their, to buy property, and it's actually reversed the sale of properties, because knotweed is such a problem for foundations. So it's a real serious risk. People, they're having trouble getting insurance when they have it on their property as well. Impacts on wildlife. I'm just trying to go through some of the general impacts. I think you guys are familiar, but I just thought I'd just, you know, cover some of it. So there's typically more indirect impacts on wildlife. You know, they can reduce the food available for grazing species out in our grasslands. Some of the animals get covered in the spiny seeds, they can have increased risk of infection. But then also there's the unfortunate birds and bats getting stuck on burdock. And this happens quite often, actually, which is very unfortunate. That's, most of these invasive plants have more indirect impacts on wildlife than not direct. So what do we do as a program? So the Boundary Weed Management Committee was established originally in 1999 and became a formal society in 2003. And since then, we've been operating on information service. So that's me up there at local fairs, trying to show plants to people. And the most common answer is, "Oh, I have that in my garden," which is not a good thing. Then I get to give them information on how to remove it. We've been participating in a clean drain dry program. Over the past summer, I'm not sure if you heard about the quagga mussels that came into B.C., into Shewaup Link. So that's a real concern for B.C. and the provinces, starting to address that through legislation. But there is also a program we're working on, and it will happen again this summer, with people out at boat launches, trying to discourage, or encourage people to clean their boats before they put it into our waterways. We also do work with classrooms and give school kids out, learn about invasive plants, pull a few weeds. Surprisingly, they actually have fun. It's, if they had to do it every day, it might not be so much fun, but they have a blast out there. Our program promotes a grow me instead program, which is, there's 26 horticultural plants that are invasive, and this program actually lists out alternative species that can be grown. And right now, they're actually working on a certification program, a pilot, actually, down in the Fraser Valley, and trying to get growers to start removing these from the shelves, because it's very frustrating when the legislation allows it, still being sold, but we're saying it's bad. We also distribute information on management of species, like this horellism, best practices for various things, from building roads to forestry to development. And also Weeds Cross Borders Calendar, which you're all going to get a lovely copy of at the end of this presentation. So the coordination and management part of our program, the Regional District of Cootney Boundary actually does all the treatment program for the boundary. So they actually administer funds from all the different stakeholders, like transportation, forestry. But our Boundary Invasive Species Society does all the inventory and mapping, so we actually maintain inventory. And so this is the area we cover, which is the boundary excluding the West Cootney area, but all the way up from Big White here to the Anarchist over to the Paulson Summit. So it's a pretty big area. We do work with the biological control insects. So there's a picture of myself doing a release, oh, in Christina Lake, actually, that's Doug Shannon from Christina Lake. That's a release of houndstongue insects. He loves bugs. We also do monitoring for biocontrol, so these are some before and after photos. This is actually just outside Grand Forks on Spencer Hill. It's hard to tell in this picture, but the idea being, we actually had lots of houndstonge, and now we have no houndstonge on the site, which is a really good, really nice change. We also do identify the lists for treatment for priority sites to be treated each year and monitor those treatments. So that's another aspect of what the society does. There's a lot of new invasives coming, which is something that a lot, you know, you kind of get used to what you have and go, "Oh, that's really bad," but there's actually a lot worse plants on the way. So Himalayan balsams, a garden escape, that's starting to become a real problem in the Okanagan and Cootneys. Not aware of any escapes here yet. Puncture vine and long-spine sandbur are two spiny species that are in the South Okanagan. We do have one sandbur site in Christina Lake, and it really affects recreation. The biggest concern is, it's going to get onto our trail systems. Very problematic for dogs when these spines get stuck in them. And it's really easy to get here. We were actually at a, had the MLA, John Slater, up for a little talk and talk about invasives, and said, "Oh, I'm sure you're not bringing it up on your shoe." Sure enough, lift his shoe, puncture vine seed. He couldn't believe it, he's like, "Oh, gotta get rid of that." I'm like, "Yeah." So they move around really easily. Orange hawkweed is something that's kind of coming down from the north. Yellow star thistle, you know, a species that's not even present in B.C. yet, that has invaded, I think it's over 15 million acres in California and Idaho and Montana. It's huge. The closest is Kettle Falls, Washington, so it's close. And this is a big priority species for our cross-borders project, because we don't want yellow star thistle to come up to us. Also some aquatics, yellow flag iris is on the increase. And flowering rush is now starting to come down the Columbia system, from the U.S. down the Columbia, and eventually will make it to us and continue on back into the U.S. Just like to show this little slide. This is where we like to manage. We love it if everyone could identify plants, we could detect them back when they're just really small, and then we could control them. But typically, the response is, "Well, it's someone else's problem." Then, you know, they start to increase, "Wow, still too busy." As they really start to increase, people start saying, "Hey, something should be done about this species." Meanwhile, this is where public awareness begins. We really need to be managing back down here. So it is important to start really watching for these new species and having good inventory information on what is here. It's, of course, control costs increase with the more you got. So what can you do? I'm not sure if anyone's done a review of your bylaws around whether or not you can require, you know, reseeding and invasives to be addressed during development. There are some best practices out there, and I encourage you to, you know, make sure that those are being included when people do any kind of development, or if there's any rezoning applications, that type of thing. Being leaders in your community, promoting the grow me instead program. There's a lot of gardeners here in Grand Forks. There's a lot of gardeners. And those garden escapes, I mean, 60% of invasive plants were garden escapes, so we know that that's a major vector. So, you know, promoting this program would be really great. It would be great to have some, you know, leadership from the city on that, because I think that really will help get landowners inside with growing the right plants. Encouraging landowners and businesses to control invasive plants on the road sides adjacent to their property. You guys have a lot of roads, it's really tough to control at all. But, you know, landowners often really like it to look nice, and some of them do an awesome job on their boulevards. But there's some areas where, you know, encouraging those landowners and maybe supporting them with, you know, providing some seed might really help them to make it look better. Supporting our education program. We have been operating it for 11 years now. And to date, we've done a lot of work here within the city, but we haven't actually received any funds to support that program from the city. We have received some in-kind support. And the city has done some education on their own through your bulletins. We normally do a mail-out to residents, all landowners in the area, every spring. And we do site visits to help people identify plants. And a lot of the requests for site visits actually are from residents in Grand Forks. Sometimes it's for grass in their lawn, but other times it is invasives. We also do a lot with the youth education. We're trying to get this new intermediate program into the schools, and it's actually being piloted out at Hurley here. Inventory of city properties and develop a management plan. I know a partial inventory had been done about five years ago, and a management plan was started, but I'm not sure, I don't think it ever got beyond that stage. And it would be really good to get that sense of, you know, what really is here and what needs to be done. Biocontrol is already widespread. We've already, you know, biocontrol releases have been done throughout the city, and they are working in most locations. Even the Canada thistle's starting to decline. Herbicides, I mean, you have to have all the tools and the toolkit. And I really think you guys should consider targeted grazing. It's something that's been used up in the Kamloops, City of Kamloops used it quite a lot in the past summer, and also in the Peace Region a couple of years ago. It really helps to get people to see that something's being done about it, and people love goats.
And you have a herd available.
Well, there's a herd up in Kamloops that's talking about they're willing to branch out. So, yeah, I'm very interested in trying to get a project going. Targeted mowing as well, and reseeding after development, which is something I have to say you guys have been doing a good job of. I noticed a lot of reseeding happening after development, ever on your trail system and roads. So, anyway, and there's just the information, because it has to be 10 minutes or less. And thank you to our funding, our current funding partners.
So, Barb.
Irene, did you want to say a few words?
No, we do get the odd comment, the city doesn't take care of their empty lots and stuff like that, irrelevant, stop signs, intersections and that. Every time a car goes by, it does spread. They did their job to make it so much easier.
Good evening, Irene. I should have recognized you earlier.
It's okay.
What about baby's breath? Is that a problem in our area?
Yes. Well, it's kind of being a little bit contained here in Grand Forks, because you have residential on either side of it, but it is starting to spread in the Midway area, it's starting to go up the hillsides and grasslands. If it does get out to Gilpin, it will start to spread, and it will spread through the grasslands. Mowing does control it well, and actually grazing controls it really well also. And there's certainly a lot of baby's breath out on that rail line.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
And the airport as well.
Yeah, and the airport's a real concern area, because where are those plants going? I know the initial attack crews have been pulling out there for quite a while, trying to reduce the spread, because they're going into these areas, pristine areas. They're causing disturbance, and are they bringing other things with them? So that certainly is a concern, is the airport. A lot of complaints have been received about, from the agricultural producers adjacent, saying, "What's going on with the airport?"
Carrie, you had a question.
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, as the co-chair of the Environment Committee, and since I do this in my, one of my professions, I'd be happy to work with you, you know, in that capacity. And then that way, the Environment Committee can, you know, review the information and maybe come up with a plan, and then make recommendations to council based on that.
Yeah, I think in accepting this report tonight, that we're putting it back to our staff to also give us a report back on things that we might do that would be more intensive than what we've done, maybe targeted a bit more. Counselor Wires.
You mentioned, Barb, a program was started five years ago, inventory of.
Yeah, so one of the city staff, Ross Iveler. Yeah. Him and I worked quite a bit on trying to get a program started. And it initially had been referred back from council to develop a plan, but then that plan didn't go anywhere after that point. So they had done a partial inventory. I think he had a lot of it in his head, because he worked throughout the area. And with the law, since he's left, I mean, some of that knowledge certainly was lost when he left as well, too. So I think it would be worthwhile to see what is here. I've done, I've followed up on some reports of possible puncture vine in the city on trails. We've actually had crews come through and do inventory on some of the trails, because we consider them high-risk. But it would be great if more staff were monitoring that as well, or the municipal staff.
Was there an opportunity here to bring a recommendation to our staff to talk to our city works department about implementing?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of the planning of some of the restructuring we're doing is, is we're going to have somebody that's going to be more dedicated to this type of planning element. So what we have is the, in the, with the, somebody from Public Works leaving the department and the potential for us to bring on a new engineering technologist that would work in these areas. Because it's about harboring the information, and planting the information, and securing the information, so it's not kept in somebody's mind, and it's managed property. Once we, we'll dig up the information, but it would be great to have a resolution from council for us to move forward on developing this. And, you know, if council, you know, the request tonight was provide financing support. Now, if we were to develop the information and develop a plan for us to get back into the program for council, I think that's one of the things I'd like to understand, what is the financing implications? How much?
Yeah.
Are we talking about? And make, and bring forward some options for council to consider, because, you know, we're already more than through our budget process. But if council wanted to consider that as partially, some part, you know, with the education component, you know, it's council's prerogative at that point. So, you know, there may be that opportunity tonight.
I think that's where we're headed here. So not only are we willing to look at the funding, but we're willing to take a closer look at the whole challenge. And I think that's what Doug's submitting to here, and if we can put it into a form of a motion, that would be even clearer.
Well, I'd like to bring a motion forward.
Counselor Wires and Second.
I'll second.
Counselor Smith. And it would basically state what's stated here, plus the added understanding that we would try to bring forward a plan. Is that the kind of motion you're willing to?
Yes. Well, we'll get clarification from the C.A.O., because he's working in that avenue right now. But I think it's, I think it's critical that we do work with organizations such as this. And I know Barb made the presentation at the Environment Committee, and with Counselor Smith's background, we want to move it forward. And maybe there's, as you said, educational tools, and your calendar. I had 25 calendars at the meeting on January the 17th, and they all went. Everybody took one, so.
Excellent. We'll have some more for you.
So it is an opportunity to get into the educational component and partnerships with other organizations.
Irene.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I want to do a more aggressive program on the horellism in the boundary, or in the Grand Forks area, and that, you know, without the cooperation of the city, it's not going to work, because we have to do the whole valley. With some cooperation from the city, it would be a lot easier.
Okay. And, so, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, what's some of the options for us this year? Because we're looking at developing our municipal ticketing bylaw. So one of the things we can work in partnership this year with the Regional District, and one of the options are to offer up some of the services regarding the information and going up to the customers in relation to the invasive weeds. Because once we develop this component, we're going to have more of a bylaw, building inspection presence within the city. So as that happens, that person will develop that component for working with the customers and in providing the educational material, but also be able to offer up the penalties associated with it from the municipal ticketing bylaw. So that's what we're working on right now.
For neglected, empty lots, that kind of property, speculation properties.
Exactly.
Okay.
So what's, so what exactly is the motion then?
Can you read back? We resolved that the primary committee recommends to council to receive the presentation from the Boundary Invasive Species Society and refers the issue to staff for further research and options in developing an effective weed management program.
Well written.
Very good.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Confirmed by the secondary. Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Okay, Barb Stewart, I think we've moved a big step forward.
Thank you. That is, that's.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
If you want to move on, the worship, accept the report.
Was that not wrapped in your motion? I think it was to accept the report and go further to that. Okay. The second delegation we have this evening is the Boundary Restorative Justice Program. Richard Tarnoff is here this evening for this presentation, and I will turn the floor over to you, Richard.
Thank you, well. Mr. Mayor and Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Jim Harrison is also going to be participating with me.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Harrison.
So, just to give a little background, for some of the members of the previous council were involved in the Boundary Restorative Justice Program, and Counselor Wires is. But since there's new counselors now, we thought it was probably a good time to reconnect. So for those that aren't familiar with restorative justice or the program we have in Grand Forks, restorative justice is an alternative to the justice system that focuses on repairing the harm that has been done to victims in the community, rather than punishment of offenders. Programs are community-based, and while adhering to similar basic principles such as dialogue, participation, and reconciliation, may be organized differently. Why do we need restorative justice? For the victims, restorative justice provides a way to participate in the process and a means to obtain restitution for the harm they've suffered. It also provides an opportunity to express their feelings and describe how the incident has affected their lives. They can see firsthand that the offender is not necessarily a bad person, but someone who's made a mistake and regrets what they did. For the offenders, restorative justice provides an opportunity to repair the harm they have caused. Doing this can help lessen the shame and guilt they're feeling, build self-respect for taking responsibility for their actions, and help to reestablish themselves as valued members of a community. For communities, restorative justice helps to heal damage caused by offenses and build cohesion. Besides these positive reasons for pursuing the restorative justice model, the current justice system is unsatisfactory in many ways. Courts are backed up, and minor offenses are often dismissed due to the passage of too much time. If offenders believe the charges may be dismissed, or that they may be found not guilty, they may be less likely to take responsibility. Punishment is not the best method to change behavior, and often leads to repeat offenses. Convictions and criminal records can create stigmas that can affect people for the rest of their lives. For the victims, even if the offender is sent to prison, they may be left with feelings of anger and victimization. So how does our process actually work? Currently, most of our files are referred to us by the RCMP, and maybe Jim can describe how that process works. Put me on the spot.
Basically, what happens is, every file that comes through our office, where we are going to recommend prosecution to the Crown Council, we review it with an eye to see, is this a case that would be better off referred to restorative justice? Quite frankly, most of the time, we end up dealing with youth matters and passing those on to restorative justice. We don't have an awful lot of youth crime in the community, so there hasn't been an awful lot of referrals. In the past year, actually, Richard, we've only referred three cases. But there are other opportunities, and in fact, the program does take referrals for adults on cases where violence is not part of the offense. And I can tell you from experience, the recidivism rate on criminals who are offenders, I should say, who go through restorative justice and complete the program completely and follow all the obligations that they make in the justice forum that's held, the Community Justice Forum itself, that recidivism rate is next to nil. I mean, it does have a dramatic impact on the victims and on the offenders, and it does actually find reconciliation and peace in the community, which I think is such a strong role that unfortunately, in many instances, our justice system fails to meet that level of success. So, you know, we hardly endorse it. The RCMP provides qualified trainers to train people in the community, and we have done so and supported the Boundary Restorative Justice for the past 10 years. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank council and the City of Grand Forks for their support of restorative justice in our community for that length of time, and encourage current city council to carry on with that support. Just the fact that you know and understand what restorative justice is, is probably enough for us. I mean, we have a strong group of local citizens, all volunteers, who just perform just a wonderful service in restorative justice. And I'd like to kind of add one little other thing. My senior constable in my detachment, and generally, senior constables tend to, they reach a certain age in their service where they become maybe, I won't use the word jaundice, but, you know, sort of, "I've seen it all, nothing affects me anymore, and it takes a lot to impress me." My senior constable went to a restorative justice, Community Justice Forum last year, and it was absolutely refreshing, because when he came back from it, he's kind of set up court in our constable's room in the police station with all the younger constables, and proceeded to tell them that it was the most powerful thing he had ever seen in his entire RCMP career. The fact that the emotion, the sincerity of the whole program really struck him as being very, very effective. And as a result, of course, of his comments, there's widespread support within my office for the program. We just haven't had that many people to refer over to the program. You know, if those opportunities arise, we definitely do refer. And currently, and I think Richard talked a little more on it, we're in the process of negotiating with the Regional Crown Council a memorandum of understanding, where we can send the report from the RCMP office to Crown Council, and they can refer directly to the restorative justice program. Should the offender fail to meet the obligations of the Community Justice Forum, then the case can be sent back and prosecuted in court. Currently, that can't happen under the arrangement that we have. So by entering into this memorandum of understanding with the Regional Crown Council, first off, hopefully, we'll see some more referrals made in cases that otherwise would have, as Richard mentioned, sat dormant in court and end up being dismissed because it took too long to get before the court system. So I think it's just a win-win situation for Crown Council and for our community. And again, I applaud the work of Richard and the other dedicated people from restorative justice. And a little later this month, or not this month, but next month, I should say, I hope to petition to come before council with my annual report on pleasing, and certainly I'll talk just a little bit more on restorative justice and how it fits into our overall crime reduction program. And it has played a major impact in our crime reduction in this community, as have a bunch of other things that we've done and that other citizens in the community have done to help reduce crime in our community. done to help reduce crime in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The only other thing I was going to say, how can the city help? Community service or volunteer labor can be a part of a restorative justice agreement. We would like to meet with city staff and/or counselors to explore opportunities for community service of this kind.
Thank you, Richard. And I'm assuming we've done that before? Have we done community service within the city works?
Not to my knowledge.
No. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When my first attorney counsel agreed to provide as an in-kind kind of contribution the, or a small can of paint for the restorative justice, council made that commitment, saying that that would be their piece, because I know that can be a little bit of a roadblock, a can of paint and some brushes for the people to go and paint. And also, we're just working on our letter of understanding with the union, so to ensure that terms of our contract are uncompromised, and the union has shown their support in this program to suggest that the restorative justice for picking up litter and the painting of graffiti would be accepted. So there is a developing partnership there, so I think that there's things that we would definitely be able to talk to the presenter about if council would like.
That sounds like a yes, we're willing to take a look at where we can work with you on that.
Yeah.
And you know, from a supportive standpoint, council is very supportive of that as something that really improves the quality of life in our community in dealing with, or having that option. Council, further comments?
Do we need a motion to?
Motion to accept the report.
Is there anything further that we need to add to that?
Well, at this point in time, it seems like it's underway in terms of discussions as to the appropriateness of using our services here. Counselor Doherty moves the acceptance. Counselor Crogg, all those in favor? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us down to questions from the gallery at this level of the primary committee. We will be going into the regular committee where there will be another opportunity for the public to come forward, but if anybody wishes to come forward at this time, in particular, to comment on any of the items that have been before us in the previous meeting, any topics. Hearing none, motion to adjourn. So move Counselor Smith, Counselor Doherty, putting us back into the regular council First item of business in the regular council meeting is the adoption of the agenda for January 28th. Motion to adopt the agenda, Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor. Two sets of minutes, January 14th, special meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Counselor Smith, Counselor Crogg, all those in favor. Counselor 14th, regular, Counselor 14th, January 14th, regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Counselor Smith, Counselor Crogg, all those in favor. No delegations or petitions. We come to council reports, and I would ask Counselor Doherty.
Your worship, on the 24th and 25th of January, we spent all day dealing with the budget for 2013, and it was a great job that the staff have done so far. And your worship, we're getting ready, begin of February for the GFI in September, we're getting that close, and we're getting ready for the baseball teams in Grand Forks using the parks. And I just wanted to mention that the Border Bruins has another two games in Grand Forks in the season moving over. We didn't win very many games, but the boys were very, very hard.
We did.
And so thank them. And that is my report to the worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Doherty. Counselor Wires.
Thank you, worship. I'll begin my report with the Grand Forks Environment Committee's biweekly, bimonthly meeting that was held on January the 17th at the Regional District Boardroom. The meeting was well-attended, and as city representatives, our CAO Doug Allen and Sasha Byrd, the Technical Services and Utility Manager, attended the meeting to answer questions with reference to the slag pile, the Overton Creek diversion, and the Boundary Road culvert work that's going to be done. Also, the Environment Committee minutes are also included in the agenda packages, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but everything is there and available for everyone and the public to review. I do want to mention that this is an opportunity where we see a strong commitment from community businesses and organizations that have sat at this table since 2006, and I'm sure our CAO will attest that the attendance that day gave the opportunity for Cheryl Unger with Interior Health to address the chlorination of our treated water and the direct effects and impacts on our health, that the treatment itself far outweighs any health issues that we could receive. So that was one of the important ones, and as I said, all the information is available in the minutes. Sasha also provided a question and answer sheet that is also attached to this evening's agenda on a number of items that evolved from the circulation of the draft report on the management of community water wells by PTO associates that was presented in our primary meeting in November 19th. So we went on to discuss opportunities. We do have Graham Watt, who sits at the table with us, and he is the project coordinator for the Kettle River Watershed Management Plan. And Graham is quite keen to see some educational opportunities and partnering with the Environment Committee, because as we dug into some of these environment events that are coming up, we established that there's six. Starting on March the 23rd, we have Earth Hour Challenge, on to the BC Drinking Water Week, which is May 20th to the 26th. And the city has taken the opportunity to, for an application for funding through the Drinking Water Week.
Through the British Columbia Water Works Association.
British Columbia Water Works Association. So we have plans there. And Bike to Work Week is May 27th to June the 2nd. We also have the Environment Canada's E-Week National Commuter Challenge, June 2nd to the 8th, and there's Clean Air Day and solar kit races on June the 5th, for which we've already sent in the purchase for the 50 kits for the grade six and seven students at Pearlie and Hutton. So this will be the third year for the car races, the second year, we did it two years ago. And the former counselor, Chris Moslin, and Paul Pernard look after the races with the kits. And they go out to community events like the Fall Fair. The Woodworkers Guild made us a track, so we have a political track as well. And finally, there's BC Rivers Day in September. So there's a lot of opportunities for environmental cooperation and educational opportunities to get them to the community and see where we can make a difference in the conservation of water. So a subcommittee was struck from this discussion, and we'll be meeting on February the 4th to investigate potential partnership opportunities in this regard. Oops. Excuse me, a footer and a header just appears. So at the Environment Committee, we have the portable nephelometer that is patrolling our community. And one of our volunteers, Paul Pernard, has taken it upon himself, and he's done quite a few runs with the nephelometer since last October. Now, the committee has come forward with a recommendation that we reimburse Mr. Pernard for his fuel based on his mileage, and he has presented a mileage breakdown for us of 241 kilometers. So your worship, I have a motion at this time that I'd like to seek council support to compensate Mr. Paul Pernard for mileage at the local government rate for his vehicle fuel used personally for nephelometer monitoring trips in November, December 2012. And that is set at 241 kilometers.
And you do have a budget item for those incidents?
We do in our 2013 budget.
So a secondary for that, Counselor Smith, discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my second recommendation from the committee actually deals with our financial request for 2013 to continue the work of the three subcommittees. And the committee's 2013 budget has been submitted to the city for inclusion in the scheduled budget sessions. So in 2012, the budget we had asked for was $20,000, and this year's, we are asking for $16,000, a reduction of $4,000, because we see potential avenues that have opened up for partnerships and grants. So my second motion is that the city accept our budget that we submitted on 2013 to the budget process.
So move Counselor Wires and second to Counselor Doherty.
Just heard that if the budget's been submitted, it'll form part of the operating budget, so that'll come forward as part of the regular readings of council.
So we don't need a motion?
We don't need a motion.
So we can receive it, and now we're okay, and it'll be included into the budget process.
Okay. We just want to make sure our budget's there.
No motion required.
Thank you so much. So moving on, I also like to thank the Boundary Sentinel, their online news article for January 21st, and they have an article, "Nephelometer Continues to Sniff Its Way Around Grand Forks." And thanks again to Aaron for the article that he did, and you can go online to the Boundary Sentinel to read up on the patrol. Citizens on Patrol met January 17th at the RCMP detachment. The volunteer group will continue air monitoring with the nephelometer. There's been a partnership formed there as well onboard, and as always, we welcome new members to join this diverse and committed group that act as the eyes and ears of the community on behalf of the RCMP. We are seeing a few of our members leaving the community, so we are looking for new candidates. They're more than welcome to contact the RCMP detachment. There is a process that is required and a criminal record check, but we do offer extensive training as well. On January the 19th, I attended the Boundary Historical Society's special meeting and luncheon. This was held at the Boundary Museum Society's Fortogas facility. The 2013 election took place, and Les Johnson has been re-elected as the president, so congratulations, Les, for stepping forward. This is his second term. Delphine Novak is their vice president. Debville Willard is secretary, and her husband, John, is treasurer. Peter Kuchin and Peter Kofdenoff are both standing directors for the 2013 year. The society has been challenged to elect a board for the past two years, but from the attendance I saw that Saturday, the region is behind the organization that has been in existence since the early 1950s, keeping local history alive for future generations. A revived memorandum, a revived momentum has surfaced that includes engaging our youth in participating and strong regional support. So there is strong representation there from across the region. On January 24th and 25th, I also participated in the budget discussions here at City Hall, the all-day sessions, and it gave us an opportunity to hear from a couple of our local organizations, the Boundary Museum Society and the Grand Forks Art Gallery Society, for their 2013 requests for funding and their long-term projects and goals that will assist council in determining the levels of support from the city for the future, not only for this year, but into the future.
Excuse me.
On January 25th, I attended the Border Bruins game.
No.
I didn't see that.
No, I didn't hear of that.
And they were playing against the Revelstoke Grizzlies. Now, this was a very exciting game. They won seven to four. It was, it was an opportunity, you know, I couldn't believe how good those young players are.
They are.
And how important it is for our community to keep a youth organization such as the Boundary Bruins active in our community. So I understand that they played the Nelson Leagues.
Yep.
And they only lost by, it was tied.
Yeah, it was tied.
And they only lost by a shot on goal when they pulled the goalie. And so, and the Nelson Leagues are at the top of the organization, so I was very impressed with this team. A lot of good players in there.
Big improvement over last year.
Oh, yes.
Yes, definitely. And finally, the Christina Lake Winter Fest is this coming weekend, and I just wanted everybody to know, the Boundary Dog Slide Association will be holding sprint races at 11 o'clock at the Lawcom Center on the stewardship lands there, so if you're looking for fun activity for the kids and family this weekend, hop out to Christina Lake, our neighbors to the east. And that's my report for this evening, your worship.
Thank you very much. Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, on the Friday, the 25th, I attended a, well, budget meeting and then attended the Family Literacy Day. And we had the, five words were drawn, which were the people's favorite words. I believe there was over 54, somewhere around 54 entries that people had made, and they would win prizes. And they had to submit a word and then a little background information on why they liked those words or what those words meant to them. So it was nice to see the variety. We had a whole bunch of incredible words. We had long words for describing people who like long words. But the five winners were agape, which is like a brotherly love or spiritual love sometimes used in that type of context. We had the word Jesus, the word beauty, and the word mittens. And my favorite was fabulous lello from a three-year-old. It's supposed to be yellow, but he pronounces it as lello. And I said that, we read out all the 54 words, but that I would try and make a sentence out of those five that were specifically picked. So we're going with, "My fabulous lello mittens remind me of the beauty of Jesus and agape." Very well done. There you go. That's a quote. It was interesting, though, that the biggest entries we had, the winner, which the most words that were entered were love. And second place was supercalifragilisticexpialidocious with actually three duplicate entries. So that was fun. It was nice to see the interaction. I believe it was also co-sponsored or endorsed by the Gazette as they had entrance throughout the paper as well as directly at the library. So it was kind of neat to see the people get together for that. And that's probably about it, Rick.
Thank you, Counselor Crogg. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, worship. On the 16th, I got together with Kristy Luke, who's an instructor at the Talcott College. She's rolling out a program for customer service, so people that are interested in getting into customer service, it kind of gives them the basics, you know, how to smile when you talk, how to come back change, how to use a cashier, all that kind of stuff. So to put a friend in your face to our retail businesses. And she had openings for 12 students, and it was filled up right away. So she was looking for some advice on how to roll it out, and she's hoping that in the end, it may be that businesses will require it as a prerequisite for employment. So there's good opportunity for, and this program is free. It runs for six weeks, went a couple days a week for a couple of hours, and you're supposed to have a nice, good skill set coming out of there. Starting up here really quick, if it's successful, she's going to roll another one out in March. Starting up here really quick, if it's successful, she's going to roll another one out in March. On the 17th, I was with Counselor Wires at the Environment Committee, and rather than duplicate what her report, I just wanted to say that the next one is at the RDKB office on March 21st at 11:00 a.m. And as Counselor Wires and I co-chair, we've decided that we'll just alternate in chairing the committee, so I'll be chairing the next one. On the 18th, I met with Paul Pinnard to talk about solar opportunities, opportunities in solar power. Solar BC was a government program that was around and has since been discontinued, so Mr. Pinnard is a little frustrated at where, what direction we might be able to go. So I agreed to sit down with him and maybe talk about some options that we can have in other communities that move forward with their solar initiatives. Then on the 19th, I went with Mayor Taylor to the Boundary Woodlot Association. It was very educational. I was at the last meeting up at George Doris Woodlot in the summer, and this was kind of a follow-up on the education I got there. And it was interesting to learn that, you know, there's locally available 240,000 cubic meters of timber. So, and the Soias Indian Ban has 70,000 cubic meters allocated to them, which leaves a considerable remainder. So there may be an opportunity for, you know, further discussion with the area directors on the commuting for us, so looking forward to continuing that conversation. On the 21st, I met with Bud Elcock, who's the president of the Grand Forks International Baseball Committee or whatever society I guess it is. And we talked about the possibility of expanding the use of James Donaldson Park. You know, it's a great asset for the community, and I personally think it's very underutilized, and there are other people that feel the same way. So in looking to expand possibilities and get more involvement in that park, I would like to ask council to make a resolution to bring the current use policy for James Donaldson Park up for review.
That's a motion and a secondary for that, Counselor Doherty? Discussion? Counselor Crock?
Yeah, I've always considered the facility as underutilized, like I think there's a lot of other events we could use it for that wouldn't affect the existing uses and would enhance the use by the community as well as visitors, so I totally agree with revisiting that.
Ready for the comment? Counselor Wires?
I totally agree. It's a beautiful facility, and I know there's organizations up there that would love to be playing baseball and other activities there. So I recommend the city for reviewing the policy on it.
Yeah, I think it's time when we took a second look at that. I'd support it as well. Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Your Worship. On the 22nd, I, just as something coming out of the Environment Committee, I'm looking for something to do, not that I, not like I'm short on that, but just to tie it in with the committee a little more. So I've sat down with Wayne Copan, our manager of Building and Environmental Services, to go over the carbon neutral Kootenay Plant and to see what opportunities there may be for us to work together on furthering that reduction of our carbon footprint. Then later that evening, we, the Economic Development Advisory Committee met, and we adopted our strategic plan that we had undertaken a couple weeks earlier in December or early January, I mean. It allows members of that committee to, like, we identified a number of areas of focus that individuals can champion and, you know, pool resources and gather other people into the work that the Economic Development Advisory Committee hopes to get done in the next couple of years. And that, in adopting our strategic plan, it wasn't in time for this council agenda.
Right.
But it will be, it's a public document, so it's now going to be available on the 4th when council adopts it for reconnaissance to receive it. So it's coming. On the 23rd, I met with Angela Sukaroff and Christine Thompson and, can't remember the name off the top of my head. Anyway, it was about family-friendly business. So they've been working on a program to make business family-friendly, you know, so for, you know, washrooms, public washrooms, and a place for women who are breastfeeding. So this program's going to roll out here pretty quick. On February 8th at 10:00 a.m. at the Credit Union, they're going to unveil the program, and I'll speak them in a few words, and I invite all members of council and the public to come and check it out. Should be good. Of course, on the 24th and 25th, I was at the budget meeting, so that was very interesting, lots of hard work going into that. And then the last thing was the 26th, I went to the Scotch tasting. It was a blast, some really good Scotches out there, and I walked home. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I have a couple of matters. First of all, we will be dealing this evening with various policies on the acquisition and disposal of properties, but there are two items that have come out of camera. The Wildlife Hall and property, which we have acquired, so we've done the legal necessities to put that back in the hands of the community. And the property at 7212 Riverside, which has been recently, is in the process of being purchased. What I'm asking for this evening is that we ask our staff to propose, to put together a RFP seeking public interest in these two properties. So could I have that motion, Counselor Smith, Counselor Doherty? So the purpose of this will be to solicit interest from groups that would be interested in either of those properties. We will, as we are moving forward with our policies, have some rules that we can now apply to this, so I think it's progressive and timely at this point that we proceed in this fashion. Further comment on this motion on the floor? Counselor Crock?
Would we also include in the RFP any city lands?
Well, we haven't done an inventory of surplus lands yet. These are two properties that we know at this point in time are surplus, and we're looking for public use of.
So I know that the Wildlife Hall came to us, but we purchased Riverside, and we're saying it's surplus before actually during purchasing it?
We purchased, yeah, we purchased it. It is in the category at this point of we need something to do with it.
I would think it was too soon for that, seeing as we haven't, like, we purchased it, but we haven't even let the ink dry.
Not even?
Not even. So I would disagree with saying it was surplus at this.
And I'm using that term surplus because it puts it in a category. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, just to address, I understand the RFP property, it'll just basically be an expression of those community groups that are interested in utilizing the facility, so it'll, that would be probably a few weeks' process, several weeks' process, four weeks' probably by the time we develop the document, get out there, and lease, we'll hear from the groups. I don't think council would be, they would have to lease it or let it out to any specific group. They'll just be hearing those proposals, so I think having those proposals sent forward, as long as it meets all the council's kind of guiding principles, I would consider that.
Okay.
So just keeping that in mind, that, you know, just hearing from the groups out there who'd be interested, because we've received from time to time many letters from different groups for different things, and we really had no foundation or ability to really report on them.
Correct. Does that clarify it all, Counselor Crock? I think I'm misusing the superfluous, surplus word here. That's probably not appropriate if that's confusing.
Yeah, well, no, it's not confusing me. It's just the fact that we're releasing to the public that we purchased this building, and now we're saying, you know, not why we purchased it or anything, just, oh, is there anybody interested in using it? So to me, it's just a little too soon.
Okay, and I'd like to speak a bit to why we purchased it. I think that there has been a longstanding commitment by council to own waterfront property along that side, and that this is a long-term acquisition that would remain in the hands of the city for future use as we develop that section of the city in our long-term plan. So that, to me, was the biggest motivation behind it. Secondary uses of it, I hope that there will be community use options here for us to consider that will be very worthwhile in terms of the whole community.
Yeah, I guess it might be answered in the real estate or real estate strategy guiding principles, but having just said that, we've turned down opportunities to purchase waterfront property right next door to that, and we didn't use the same criteria, didn't have the same interest, so.
Thank you. Further comment? All those ready for the question? So this would be to develop RSPs for those two properties in question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Do you wish that recorded?
Yeah, if it was for all properties, then I'd support it, but just a couple of them makes sense.
Okay. The other item of business that I have is to announce that I will be seeking the NDP nomination for the riding of Boundary Sumilkamine, and I will expect, we're waiting to hear back from municipal affairs in terms of the implications of that for my role as mayor, but the way I see it at this point, I have a commitment not to neglect my responsibilities as mayor, leading up to the call of an election. At the call of an election, I'm assuming that protocol there would be for the mayor to step aside for that period of time, but we will get further clarity on this from our CAO. So can I answer any questions, comments?
Your Worship, good luck, Your Worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Doherty. Thank you. Remember us.
Remember us.
No, I think I can make a meaningful contribution to the frustrations the city's experienced in dealing with the problem, so I promise to favor my hometown. Thank you. And can I have a motion to accept all of the reports, Counselor Smith, Counselor Doherty, all those in favor? The Regional District report, I don't have too much to say at this point on the Regional District. I thank Counselor Wires, who will be attending in my place on the January 31st meeting. The Regional District is busy working on their budgets, and there will be regional meetings set up that you're invited to if you want to sit in on the region presenting their budget to regional people. Irene, can you tell us when yours is coming?
March the 4th.
March the 4th?
The city of Seagulls.
Okay, so that's an important one if you want to understand the workings of the regional.
That's a council night.
Is it?
A council meeting.
No.
Sorry.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, we'll have to miss that one. There will be an Area C and Area E will also be having their meetings coming up in the next while.
C's is in February the 7th. C's is in February the 7th. That's right.
February 7th.
At 6:00 p.m., I think it is. Yes.
And there's one other item I wanted to deal with, and that was a comment about forestry by Counselor Smith. Area D, Area E, Area C, and the city of Grand Forks have a conference call on the morning of February the 7th. And we are seeking consultation from an expert in the field to basically put together a plan that would encompass a community forest for the whole of the Boundary. And as Counselor Smith has alluded to, although we are being told there is a lack of timber available to be assigned to a community forest, we're finding that there are all kinds of opportunities out there that we need to look at. The non-land-based nerf hole types of allocations of timber are one of the things, but there are a lot of other buyback opportunities if we can look at making a solid enough case for why that would work for us as a group in a regional relationship. So the regional relationship is exciting. There are not many regions of the province that have really joined hands to go after sustaining a timber supply in an area, and I think this would be one where if we do hold ourselves together as a group in the Boundary, that we're going to have a good chance of being heard by government. So we'll be pursuing that, starting with this conference call on the 7th. We'll fill you in as it develops.
What time is that?
It's 9:00 in the morning on the 7th. No, it's a conference call between just the players, Area D, city, and Area E and C. But I will make sure that council is informed immediately as that plan makes, begins to develop. And that's my report for the Regional District. Further questions?
Oh, Your Worship, as part of the Regional District, you sit at the hospital board?
Yes.
Can you enlighten us on the discussions around taxation for future hospital development?
Yes. Actually, Roxanne has got some documents there that show a plan at the regional table to borrow money over a period of time in preparation for a large hospital project sometime in the next five to 10 years. And so there's a group at the table who have proposed that we tax, you know, we do a 40-60 split, right? So for our 40%, that we would begin to tax an additional million from the large region each year, 2 million and 3 million, so the impacts on our taxation levels that would be incurred by those kinds of anticipatory borrowing. So we would begin to put our money aside for this large project.
So is this large project, have they identified where that project would be?
No. No, and I have to tell you, we did discuss this at council, kind of informally, a few times, and I've been opposed to it. So you'll have to tell me if you disagree with that position, but my feeling at this point is that it doesn't make a lot of sense for me. We're already paying for what we've got, and I agree, if we're going to do something in the future, we don't hit everybody with large tax increases, but we borrow money to extend over a period of 10 or 15 years, but not until we know more about where that's going to be. And the way we buffer that is to extend it over a 25 or 35-year period. So to put money aside right now, and this is a personal opinion, so contradict me if you will, but I just wouldn't run my household that way, and I'm not sure that we should be running out of service that way. Counselor Crock?
Yeah, when I sat on the hospital board, the question also came up, and like you, I always oppose it. I believe in reserve funds, but it just seemed wrong to do that when they haven't even figured out exactly what they're going or where they're going, so it didn't make sense. So I concur with the direction that you're taking, which is non-support for that.
And, you know, I think we can expect back from Roxanne a little more detail on how that would impact our tax levels here, but again, philosophically, I think we need to decide whether we're going down that road or not, and I'm not hearing a lot of enthusiasm for it.
Unless they're building it in the Boundary.
Unless they're building it here.
So are they going to, like, how are they collecting this information?
They're going to vote at the table on it. There's going to be a motion at the table, and Director Perry Falcon sits at the same table. There'll be a motion at the table, and there's some 47 per- There'll be a motion at the table and there are some 47 participants at the table from the, how many?
25.
Oh, I thought there were more. Some people talk quite, maybe it's a big group. They'll be voting on it. Councilor Crogg?
And just of note, when I sat on it, and I don't think it's changed much, but the regional district of Kootenay Boundary was outweighed by the other players, so our we didn't have as many votes.
It is a weighted vote system. I think that both Area D and the city have two votes at the table, which is no different than what it was before.
So it's actually increasing Central Kootenay.
Yeah.
Regional district, Central Kootenay, Boundary, Kootenay and Central Kootenay.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll keep you informed on that, but again, I'm not going to change my position unless there's a clear voice on this council telling me different. And so a motion to accept the regional district report, Councilor Smith, Councilor Crogg, all those in favor? Okay, the next item is the manager of technical services recommendations for decisions, the cost of the short-term recommendations on this slag pile. So we have a geotechnical report basically outlining the mitigation strategy that had been recommended to us. The total cost is $270,000 to come from the slag fund. A major piece of that is the redirection of Overton Creek and it needs attention rapidly. I think that we're looking at trying to get this done before fresh it this year, since it was that time last year when we had all of the degradation under the file and the issues that had developed. So can I turn this over to Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So exactly, just to reiterate what you said, we have the Class C cost estimate. What that means is basically it's a plus or minus of 30%. So we haven't got out there to get all the details at this point, but we are ready because we haven't tendered it. So what we're expecting now is to tender the project and receive our pricing on the, once we have the final recommendation from council. Once we look forward with this, we will bring, we'll tender the project and we'll basically divert the water downstream, I guess south of the slag pile and then Overton Creek will be relocated into the Grand B River at that point. We've identified as well, there are a few municipal culverts that go down from Overton Creek, down Grand B Road that basically could have some influence on this as well. So we have everything in order. We have the geotech report and we have the qualified environmental professional who is providing the guidance on the relocation of the creek and we're just waiting for those final, that final information to get tendered and then we'll be out for construction here shortly.
Great, thank you. So we're looking for a motion to receive the report and to approve the funding, Councilor Doherty. Councilor Smith. Questions, discussion?
It's great, the staff's moving on this so quick.
Yeah, you know, again, you know, to allay some concerns, this is really preventive and very cautious on the city's part and we're trying not to alarm people, but I think we're taking a very responsible position towards it. Councilor Crogg?
Ah, just to be picky, in the consultant's report, they say they speculate that a large majority of the slag was then ground and milled to a sand particle size in an attempt to separate free materials from slag after the initial roasting process. My understanding was when they were dumping the slag, they were just hitting it up with water.
I think he's talking about a different process.
Was just fracturing it in the sand.
Yeah, I don't think that fracturing process was part of what he was referring to. I read that too, I was a bit confused, but I think the mineral extraction process went on with that ladle slag at a final point, but I'm not sure what he was referring to in terms of process.
That was what I.
But it wasn't the water shattering from what I can read. Further comments, discussion? The motion is to go ahead with this. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? The next is another report from our manager of technical services, a real estate strategy guiding principles. This is what I referred to earlier in terms of the request for proposals. We have a lot of city land and thank you previous Mayor Sagamoto for some very strategic moves that he made over the years to acquire certain properties, but in fact, we didn't really have much of a set of rules to go on that for the direction of council. And what our staff have put together here to me is an excellent approach to looking at the policy that is necessary to guide council with acquisition and disposal. So I turn it again over to Mr. Allen for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to read, you know, to go through the document itself, staff and the council are always challenged with opportunity, you know, when a property comes up for purchaser or for disposal. One of the pieces that we'd like to do is identify as part of the request of council is to create the RFP for considering the disposal or leasing of the two properties that we recently acquired, but then also to look at the entire inventory and bring forward some for discussion for council, an understanding of what properties they own. The idea behind the strategic initiative is to identify and marry the report and the strategy to council's already longstanding plans, the Sustainable Community Plan, the Long-Term Financial Strategy, the Five-Year Financial Plan, the Annual Report, council's Strategic Planning, the Community First Agreement. These are a lot of the documents that council and the city's invested a lot of money into over the last several years. This, our policy now for staff to follow will guide us in how we do things and how council makes decisions on these things. It's an open process. It'll basically, the process is out there for the community to understand so when council is disposing or acquiring lands, they'll be using these guiding principles. Revenue generation and job creation, so when council's considering reports, it'll be revolved around that, that'll be a key element. Speculation for development, acquisition to, sponsoring, grants, strategic acquisitions, secondary benefits to disposing and community support groups. So in considering all the requests as community groups come forward, council will consider these as their guiding principles when community groups come forward to acquire or borrow or use city-owned lands. This is a good governance structure for council to consider. These are the guiding principles. It'll actually be refined into a policy in the, it was before council for discussion purposes and staff is looking for any feedback on it and if there is none, then we'll basically develop our RFP for these two properties based around this type of document.
Councilor Smith?
I'd like to move that council receives the report and assess the proposed strategy and guidelines to direct staff to proceed with the creation of the real estate principles and a policy to guide council with the acquisition, disposition and leasing of city-owned land to maximize the financial returns and the best utilization of this resource to the benefit of the entire community.
So moved, and a secondary? Councilor Crogg?
No.
Councilor Weir? Discussion? Councilor Crogg?
No, I don't have a hate on for real estate. I think this is what we need and I think that there should be a policy, as I said before, I think we're hasty on that one, but I do have some concerns. Number three, under revenue generation, job creation services input through you to staff, it says not hold vacant city-owned lands for unreasonable periods of time. So I'm looking for a definition of unreasonable, because sometimes a city needs a whole lands for 20 years or 30 years.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's purposely put in there to give us some flexibility to respond to the unique situation that a property might be in. For instance, parcel Z, do you think we've held on to that for an unreasonable length of time?
No.
You know, so it's a parcel.
Yeah.
We know the future value of it, we're in no rush to develop it. I don't think it's referring to that type of a property holding.
No, but it does say unreasonable periods of time.
It's very subjective.
Yeah, how do you define unreasonable? So it either could be taken out or reworded that we're not holding land just for land's sake or something along those lines, but it's just too open, so that was one, unreasonable. I don't like that. And number four, the city will not pursue land or develop its own land on a speculative basis, is to provide stewardship of public assets to the community, but there are communities out there that have been the developer for their own properties and successfully, so I don't know if that should even be in there. Like I like, as a guiding principle, that we are the stewardship of public assets of the community, but it doesn't necessarily say, or should say, that at some time it's not beneficial to the community to actually develop its own lands. If we were to build, as an example, a community center and you built it on X number of acres and in order to help fund that, you could develop 10 lots on those acres and get way more money out of them than wait for some developer to come along. So I think, to me, number four is restrictive, either needs to be rewritten or taken out.
Just stop it for a second. So you're saying we should be more aware of the business responsibility to develop a property if it's low risk?
Yeah, like if it makes sense, if it's low risk and it benefits. So I like the concept that a community charter says we're stewardships of the public assets, but that we shouldn't be restricted that if a benefit came to us, that we couldn't develop property or a 3P, public-private partnerships, because I read this, is that might nuke some of that stuff out.
Yes.
So I'll just do the last one.
Councilor Smith?
Okay.
Who does that all agree?
I just wanted to say that community charter itself would be the one, the limiting document, not necessarily us.
To some extent, yeah, they do.
But it doesn't say that.
Benefiting individual businesses.
Yes.
With the use of property, deflated values that.
But not through, oh, sorry, but not through public-private partnerships and, you know, like I say, we've got housing developments and you can wait till the developer comes along or if it would make sense and we were to put in the infrastructure, we were to develop the profit that best suited the city, right? So, you know, if we needed a park, example is years ago, they were looking for a green space up on Valley Heights. Well, the city owns land on Valley Heights and I went up there and I looked and there's three, minimum three to five lots that could be developed on city land and that money could then be used to fund that park and other things. So if I have this, it says that the city won't ever develop, then opportunities like that might disappear. So we end up with an extra park and it didn't cost the residents anything and then we end up with five new residents, which helped the taxes. So that's why I said I thought it was restrictive.
Okay, I'm not reading it that way in particular. I'm reading it differently. Like we are currently, if you look in the West End there, we subdivided off 3.5 acres with silver kettle, but in a development attitude, we kept property that we felt would be valuable and strategic in future. So is that development or is that just good forward thinking? I don't see us being restricted, but this is the feedback that our CAO is.
And that's why I'm giving it, because it says to develop its own land on a speculative basis.
Right, we can certainly work to clarify that more, but I think as a template, this is a really good beginning in terms of having some rules to go by.
Oh, no, and I totally agree with that. And my last point would be number six, which is a sponsored crown grants. The city will attempt to locate any new municipal buildings, facilities or parks on crown lands through a sponsored crown grant wherever feasible. An airmate available to municipalities by the crown at no cost, provided the land is only used for municipal purposes. And I've always looked at crown land as belonging to us all and if it's next to a municipality, then those people, that government and the people should have access to requests. So I like this, that if we're going to build something new, that we ask to build it on crown land because we would get that, but it's missing a part, which says that we should also be looking at seeking any crown land that would benefit the city and it may not end up being for municipal purposes. At one point, we were doing an inventory of land that was suitable for light industrial, right? So this doesn't say that we would look for anything other than putting municipal buildings or using it for municipal purposes, right? I think that if we need a certain amount of crown land and it's reasonable, then we should get it and then we could use it for whatever without their, like, this is perfect for the sponsored crown grants.
Christina Lake got their housing development, their seniors' housing development on crown land, right? That was something they worked on for.
Yeah, so we should have more latitude in what we ask the province for.
Okay, good talking point there, that we'd like more freedom in that area.
I know, sir.
Mr. Allen?
I'm not sure if number seven kind of addressed that. I'm not sure if that was, you know, dependent of where we're trying to go with that, just to make sure that, you know, although it meets the strategic initiative of the community, so, but we'd be happy to add that piece into the sponsored grants, but we wanted to try to keep a little bit of separation in there.
Yeah, it just says acquisitions to enhance, oh, sorry, seven says acquisitions to enhance the value of existing city-owned lands. So if it, and/or including crown land, something along those lines, because, like, I don't just want to acquire properties within the city to enhance the value of our city-owned lands, but outside, in the realm of the government.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote on this matter? Further comments? No? All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Thank you very much. The next item of business is the protocol policy. This basically covers, I'm sorry, we're one down, aren't we?
Yeah.
We're on the first one. Bylaw discussion, then protocol. Use my slowness and get this.
The little banner thing.
Yeah, no, I'm on it, I just keep jumping around, misbehaving as usual, get tired after this long.
Yeah.
So this is changes to our format and meeting structure to allow us to basically operate in a council of the whole, committee of the whole meeting. This is what we had discussed at the last meeting and these changes to our bylaws. Our corporate officer has done a tremendous amount of job on this, putting together this document. It had to incorporate a lot of minutia in terms of whens and wheres and also with the likely change the government's going to make to the actual election month this year or this coming term, that they're going to shorten it so the election doesn't take place, the provincial election timing isn't in the middle of a cold stretch in November. And so she's had to anticipate all of that in it, which is a lot of what you can see in terms of changes. The biggest challenge for us this evening, as we discussed a bit earlier, was that we need to schedule our meetings. We do have the ability to change these times if we need to with proper notice, but we've got to fill in the blanks here this evening with, regular council meeting is what time are we going to have that on a Monday? The committee of the whole meeting is what time? I'm thinking at this point in time that the procedures bylaw should reflect, let me suggest 9:00 in the morning.
Fairly.
To noon on the committee of the whole. me suggest nine in the morning to noon on the, uh, committee of the whole day. And that the, uh, regular council meeting follow the committee of the whole and, and give us time in the gap to do, um, in-camera meetings. So maybe, uh, I've thrown it out, three o'clock in the afternoon for a regular meeting of council?
I'd prefer seven o'clock, yeah.
You want to go back to the evening? So, Counselor Wires?
Well, I was looking at the, uh, what some of the other communities are doing, and I was kind of attracted to the 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, Counselor Crowe?
Yeah, um, councils are, just to put it back on, they're made up of, of different people from the community, uh, and the majority of those people are retired. So then on a Monday, timing from nine to 12 or at four o'clock is convenient if you're retired, but not if you're actually still actively working. So, um, I would, uh, agree with Counselor Smith that at least for the evening, um, that it be at seven still.
Counselor Doherty?
I have no problem, but nine o'clock in the morning is fine.
That works for you for the committee of the whole?
And seven o'clock is fine for me, or four, or whatever.
So you're, you're open to either?
I'm open to any of your ideas.
And Counselor Wires, uh, suggested that because we have working people and that we should keep our regular meeting as an evening meeting?
Or, no, I suggested that.
Yeah?
She said four.
I did, I did say four.
Yeah.
We were saying so.
Just seeing that. Well, I, I'd like to see what would work best for the staff, too.
I guess there are implications in cost as well in bringing staffing to evening meetings. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, the, uh, staff has built us into our, our collective contracts from our management standpoint, so our expectation is to, to, you know, meet council's needs. Uh, from council's considering this, uh, you know, we could, we could also, we could probably still amend the bylaw later on in the future, and we could poll the community if you, if council would like. I mean, we, but in order for us to move forward with this new process, the committee of the whole, we'd have to make the changes, but part of the process could be for council to consider what the future needs of the community are, to, to poll the community as well at, at some point.
So I'm hearing there's some flexibility and maybe moving forward with starting this on March the first with the nine to 12 o'clock.
Yeah, I think we've got that, yeah, I think we've got that, everybody's comfortable with that for the Monday morning. Yeah.
And then the, uh, followed by a council meeting at 7:00 PM at night?
So we may have our in-cameras, so, uh, right after lunch, if we had lunch at noon, had an in-camera at one?
So we, your worship, so we wouldn't, then we wouldn't have to be coming at five o'clock to start and have dinner?
Right.
We could go home and have dinner?
Come back at seven.
I like that idea.
Okay, so are, we agree that we'll try the, uh, the nine to 12 committee of the whole, early afternoon for in-camera, and then, uh, the seven o'clock meeting would be a start at seven without the necessity of, of coming in at five to seven, so 6:30 to be at the table at seven would, would work? Counselor Crowe?
Yeah, uh, just the, one other note. Some of us put forward our calendars, so I have to put forward my work calendar, um, earlier in the year based on, and, and I based it on our existing meetings, so it's, it's all fluctuates around those, those evening meetings, so I'm free for that. So there will be, um, meetings in that range that are nine to 12 that I won't be able to attend, because I've already made those, those commitments based on the old schedule, so if people are wondering why I'm not there for that, right? So I haven't gone through the calendar, because I didn't know the, the times, to see how many meetings would be affected, so, but just a heads up.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Counselor. All right, Counselor, are you ready to put a motion forward on this matter?
Sure.
Uh, and we filled in the blanks, so the motion is that they instruct staff to proceed with proposing a procedure bylaw, number 1946. So that motion, Counselor Doherty, second, Counselor Smith, and we filled in the time questions there. Are we, uh, Counsel, uh, Counselor, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say some, if you, if you mind, would you maybe go through a couple of the highlights of that for, for the people that are, uh, that are here, just to kind of talk about it?
Sure.
So, so what we'll be doing then is, from a committee of the whole perspective, all the delegations that come before council would come in the morning, and they would do their presentations during the day. Uh, that would facilitate people that are working in regular business hours, people that commit from the regional district, people that are, uh, for instance, fire professionals, consultants, will actually end up saving us a little bit of money in the long run, because they won't need to necessarily spend the night here, they'll be able to come in and provide their information to the public. It'll also allow the, uh, the community to, you know, for instance, for, um, you know, children or, or school classes to potentially come down to council chambers to, uh, to integrate that process into the, uh, school structure if they so choose to do that. Like, I think it'll allow council to break up the, the process to see really what's going on, it really separates the day out, there's an early morning component to it, and then there's the late evening portion. The evening portion will see the resolutions the council adopted, it won't be a very exciting, robust meeting generally, they'll be, uh, generally just dealing, passing the resolutions, maybe, maybe some dialogue, but most of the dialogue is anticipated to happen at committee of the whole as per the discussions we've had with council. So I think the, uh, that would be some of the major highlights of this, it'll just allow for a lot more presentations for the public.
All right, thank you. Ready for the question? You know what's on the floor then? This is going to give us that structure for committee of the whole meetings. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. The next item is a complimentary, uh, piece of work by our corporate officer, again, to set up the rules for delegations and petitions. So this is, again, would be part of bylaw number 1946, I understand? And can I have a motion to adopt this? Counselor Doherty, second, Counselor Smith. Discussion? Are you not, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. And we have a number of information items. We have a motion to accept as we determine. Counselor Smith, Counselor Doherty? First item is the Grand Forks Curling Club. They are requesting, uh, the use of the tables and chairs. They're interested in storing the tables and chairs from the wild, for the Wildlife Ball, uh, storing them for us, making them available. And so, uh, Mr. Allen has been in discussions with them at this point, and, uh, the, uh, the deal looks like it will be struck and would allow us to continue to utilize the tables and chairs when we required them. And so, uh, this is as recommended.
I'll move that, your worship.
Recommend that council direct staff to write a letter with the following. Counselor Doherty, all those in favor? Memo from AKBLG, the annual general meeting, third and final call for resolutions, uh, received for information. Counselor Wires, do you have anything further to add to that?
Well, I think we should plan a session with council to look at possible resolutions before AKBLG, or if we have any flavor.
The deadline is the 18th, so it's coming up quickly. Does council have some resolutions in mind that, uh, nothing's jumping up? Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, we have the council meeting next week, maybe we can have a little bit of time to, to plan that, we have a council meeting next Monday night, so maybe at that point, maybe everybody could think about that and bring forward any potential resolutions.
Okay, good idea. Received for information. Uh, the Grand Forks Public Library, audited, unaudited financial statements, received for information. Boundary Restorative Justice, the group that was here this evening, again, the minutes from their November 8th, and, uh, received for information. And the task list for January 14th, completed and in progress. Further questions on any of those items? Motion to adopt what we've decided, all those in favor? Carried. And we have bylaws. I like the 1946, the day of my birth. Sorry, but 1945, that's a better year, when it's the end of World War, so I'm giving that process this year, first day. Okay, we have bylaw number 1944, Electrical Utility Regulation, Regulatory Amendment Bylaw. We have given this bylaw first, second, and third reading, and I'm accepting a, a motion to give final reading to this motion. Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, this is the Electrical Utility Regulatory Amendment Bylaw 1944, final reading. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. The next one, I was hoping that I would be able to, um, clarify this a little better than I did the last time, it was on the agenda for first, second, and third. This is strictly for, um, congregate housing that has an existing contract with a garbage pickup system that would duplicate their charges, double up their costs for a period of time until that runs out, and then they would be part of our, uh, garbage regulations would be in, in charge for the service. So that is, we're going, uh, for this, uh, 1945, for final reading of this bylaw. Can I have that motion? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Wires? Got to get you on the agenda.
I didn't, my worship, he just never.
On the right, I think I'm a little blind on that side. All right, everybody know what we're voting on here? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And, uh, brings us to, uh, the final question from the public and media, so can I ask if there is anyone who wishes to come forward and, uh, address, Counselor, ask you a question, make a comment?
A lot the same here.
Yeah.
Evening, Counsel. So I just want to clarify, uh, so regular council meetings will be at seven o'clock?
Uh, regular council meetings, yeah.
And council of the whole, nine to 12? Perfect, okay, thank you.
Further comments, questions from the public? Okay, motion to adjourn. So moved.